Greg Gohens is in route. I'm watching him walk in now.
Randy, can you say?
We are.
Greg Gohens.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't hear. Okay, thank you.
We're now recording and we're live.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you for joining the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board of Trustees Special Meeting on March 15, 2022. At this time, we would like to enter an executive session. So I would first, excuse me, excuse me, I'd like to call for a motion for executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
For a matter of not elected personnel.
Yes, for, excuse me, thank you, thank you, Dr. Daniels. I guess this will be for a matter of not elected personnel, 20-minute duration. Then we also have an executive session scheduled for 10 minutes for executive consultation with attorney for public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged attorney-client relationship with possible action to follow an open session. Okay, with that, let's see, why don't we just go ahead and motion it up again? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries. And at this time, any board members attending and personal will walk to room 3397 for the executive session. Thank you.
Ready? Alrighty, we are back in the room and live. We have other items on the agenda and I'll just kind of say in advance that the agenda was created that we knew the timing was tight and if we don't cover the items in the four o'clock session, I would ask that we just roll them to the five o'clock session. So, alright.
Understood.
Chair Criswell, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's see, at this point in time, we will, we'd like to invite the first of the presenters to give an update to the board.
So, catch up to, here comes Mr. Beach. He's getting his mic set up, he'll be here with us shortly.
Understood.
Test, is that on, yep, okay. Good evening, sorry for the delay there. So, this presentation is for discussion of the board for the consideration on behalf of the Kansas City Kansas Community Education Health and Wellness Condominium Association for the selection PGAV architects to be the architectural firm for that project. This is coming before the board for consideration of presenting PGAV to you as a preferred vendor status. There are a number of reasons for that, I'll cover those really quickly, so for informational purposes. One of them was is that PGAV has been involved in this, in this project from the very, very beginning, doing a lot of the conceptual work, working with contractors and trying to determine value for the project and many other services that have been, been done. The, the likelihood of some of that value being lost and having to be repeated with another, another architect firm, if selected, would be very likely, we don't know what that dollar amount would be, but, but it would be very likely that a lot of this work would have to be redone under, under a new firm. Further, one of the, the additional considerations that we want you to be aware of and, and for your consideration is that PGAV architects uses as part of their bid in formulating their bid for this contract, which based on the information you have in your packet by the way, is about $3.4 million for this project. They bid, they bid this job in conformity with the guidelines of the, at the State of Kansas Office of Facilities and Property Management Design and Construction Manual. It's a pretty, that's a lot of mouthful, but it's basically a standard manual that is used by most architectural firms and in some cases contractors for the services that they're providing in order to basically make sure that their fees are uniform and in compliance with recommended guidelines using that manual. Under the, under the direction of this manual, PGAV has represented that the complexity of this engagement is considered to be moderately complex according, again, according to the Office of Facilities and Property Management Design and Construction Manual. A moderately complex engagement brings about a fee that can be as low as about six and a half percent of the value of the project, construction value of the project to 8.75% of the value of the project. There are a number of items in this engagement that were identified by PGAV as being complex, not just moderately complex, but, but quite complex. And, and a quite complex fee can range anywhere from about seven and a quarter percent to nine and a half percent. PGAV's quoted fee for their services for this project come in at 6.88%, which is well down on the low, low end of the moderate complexity for this, for this type of engagement. Furthermore, they've identified two other services that are critical to this project that are normally outside of the scope of the actual architectural fees that, you know, general contract, that they've included into their contract at no additional charge for, for these services. So, that basically is a, as a very quick and rough presentation to help lead up the discussion today for the consideration of PGAV architects to be engaged by the Kansas City Kansas Community Education Health and Wellness Condominium Association for their services relating to the, to that project. Any questions or additional information that Dr. Moser you feel need, needs to be added or for the group?
No, I believe that you've covered it all and just again, we're, we're looking to do this as a preferred vendor versus an RFP because we have done all the due diligence to ensure that the price is competitive and I believe actually more better than competitive because we have a long working relationship with PGAV. They have done very good work for us and I believe they'll continue to do good work moving forward.
That's approved by all the five, all five partners.
The contract will need to be approved by the majority vote of the condominium association, which includes Casey, Casey, she must be a yes vote because of the percentage, we are 60% of the facility space.
And Chair Chris Will, just for general information and, and Trustee Ash and Trustee Isner jump in here, we had a discussion with Mr. Beach at the finance committee meeting and kind of put him through his paces, so we're confident that you're, this is good information and it's a good bid and the preferred vendor status is warranted.
Understood, thank you.
And just, go ahead, go ahead.
The strikeouts, the strikeouts in different parts of the, the contract and the different wording, is that, is that agreed upon, is that what one of the parties is suggesting?
Yeah, so that's a draft contract that we actually had PGAV draft on a standard AIA contractual form, it will, it is being reviewed by MVP Law, it's also being reviewed by the other partners in the group as, as well as possibly some of their legal councils, but it, there'll be some changes made to that because that's in a very rough initial draft form. And so modifications will likely happen and need to be made to that contract before it's final.
But our attorney will, will.
Their cleanup, it's cleanup changes, not content related changes.
Right, excellent. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Beach or Dr. Moser?
I'm sure.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, this is, I just want, one, one more point of clarification, just so everybody understands. We did, as Finance Chair Bruny indicated, the Finance Committee reviewed this, we had good discussion about it and. good discussion about it and one of those points of discussion and Mr. Beach has hit on it here in terms of things we considered for them as a preferred vendor was that, and as he said in his presentation here again today, that they have been involved with this since the beginning and it, should we switch architects, likely a lot of the work's already been done, have to be repeated. So, I think everybody can follow that and understand that. He did also tell you that, you know, the fee amounts to $3.4 million. So, one question that I asked for clarification on is how did we get to them working with us in this project from the get-go since we did not do RFP, you know, for the services and that? So, maybe Mr. Beach, you and or Dr. Moser could just be sure that the board is clear on, on that point because it is $3.4 million.
Yeah, if I may, I'll, I'll go ahead and address that. When we first started talking about a location downtown, it was literally more than three years ago now, right? And the partners that we were looking at going together with to kind of add some additional wraparound services, one was the YMCA and the second was Catholic Charities. At a point during the process, Catholic Charities decided that they needed to move forward with something else. And PGAV has served both YMCA and Catholic Charities for a long time and they were very pleased with it. And then as we continued, the YMCA continued on with us and it's just been a very good working relationship from the beginning, but it was from consultation with the CEOs of YMCA and Catholic Charities.
I would have, and I totally agree with the organization, but there was comments made about more changes to this contract down the road. I'm always have a little heartburn about agreeing to a contract that may not be the final contract. So, would you be bringing back substantive changes in the contract if there are any? Or, you know, how do we make sure that the contract that the board approves is the contract to move forward?
Yeah, if I may, the, most of that is cleanup language for, language that exists in pre-built AIA contracts that are not necessary for what we are doing. So, it would not be a substantive change for how we are proceeding, but if this is a little more cleanup. This is a situation where actually as we develop the, the association, we'll have the first association meeting on the 28th. Perhaps I, I think maybe a better way to, to say is, is if the, the board approve, it'd be, I believe that I will be the director representing KC KCC on this project and the board would provide me authorization to make any changes that I believe are necessary. And if there are any substantial changes that I believe should come to the board, then I would bring those to the board, but that I be selected as the college's representative on the association and in the association vote.
Goheen.
Yeah, one, one other thing I might point out is, and, and Mike and I were talking about this, what you're actually doing tonight is authorizing Dr. Moser as, as representative on that, that condo association to engage architect firm. You're technically not approving the contract itself tonight. So, there's a slight difference in what you're actually doing.
Feeling better about that, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that question because that does help clarify and, and this is some new ground, some new road that we're driving, coming down. So, appreciate the good questions.
So, it is, I'm sorry, so our role is to select Dr. Moser as KC KCC's representative and the condo association vote to engage PGAV architects to provide architectural services. Is that correct?
Yes, in the finalization of this contract.
Yeah, I, I think though it probably still would be a good idea if once all the cleanup, if we saw, still saw a final contract as, as the organization has given final approval for a project this size.
And that was part of the plan, was it not, Dr. Moser?
Well, the plan, if there is anything that is substantive in change or substantial in change, I would bring that to the board. If it is not substantial in change, the board is giving me authorization to make those decisions on behalf of the college in the condominium association. When we will be voting on these items, it will be majority rules on the vote, but it would be majority must include the college. So, it'd be the college plus two more entities. So, the, the college owns 60% or is 60% of this project. So, we do have a, a super authority vote, so to speak. But as things change and, and discussions are held in the association serving as the, the director on the board for KC KCC for the condominium association, the college is granting me the approval to make those decisions. And if I believe it needs to come back to the board prior to an additional vote, then I would do that. Otherwise, we would still provide the final contract to the college in its absolute final form. We do have to stay on a schedule in this project because it's already tight and we're trying to have it open by fall 2024, which is a big lift at this time. And I would just give you my word or, you know, if there is something that the board, I think this needs to go to the board, then I would do that.
If it's any other consolation, obviously, in the contract, the final form of the contract that's being reviewed and would be signed off on by the association, it's going to be a contract with the association, not with the college. But we would obviously be reviewing those changes and signing off on any changes to the contractual language. And this is a little different than your normal contract because the architects have what's called an AIA contract, as do construction managers, other types of entities. It's a formed contract where you're making changes to something that's an industry standard. So, changes that are made to it are not going to be substantive. The real, the real issues are going to be what the services are required and provided for under the terms of the contract.
Yeah, well, those explanations are comfortable with it.
Yeah. Who, I know it included Mr. Beach's name as well. So, does Dr. Moser and Dr. and Mr. Beach and a board chair sign this contract or just the president?
I'll let Mr. Goheen answer that.
Ultimately, the, the contract will be signed by the, whoever is appointed at the next board meeting for the association to be the association president. It won't be signed by a college official in their capacity as a college official. Does that make sense? I, I know it's crafted a little bit differently right now, but that's the ultimate contract itself will be a contract with the association, which you're approving right now, that is giving Dr. Moser the authority on behalf of the college to vote in favor of this contract, vote in favor of retaining this architecture firm for the condo association.
Okay.
We would be holding conversations as, you know, such as we're doing now or in, and, and in the executive session. So, the board is always informed.
Alright, thank you. It looks like we have some other items here that we will not be able to get to during this session. So, we will need to.
If I may, I would request that we move those to the five o'clock session.
Yes, yes, that's what, that's what I was going for. Okay, and moved. Alright, okay. Let's see, with that, may I have then a motion to adjourn the open meeting, the open meeting, sorry. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And then do we need about, about five minutes before we actually start? Or do you want to just go right in? What are your recommendations?
Yes, please.
Okay, five minutes. Alright, thank you.
Five oh five.
Five it is.
Alright, can you go and switch to this? Here we go. Yep, thank you. Alright, Chair Criswell, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you so much. I'd like to call this March 15th Board of Kansas City Kansas Community College Board of Trustees meeting to order. We will start by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by a recording of Vice Chair Bruny.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bruny. Okay, next will be the Kansas City Kansas Community College Mission Statement. I'll go ahead and read it. It is to inspire individuals and enrich our community, one student at a time. At this time, we'll have roll call.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Brown. Vice Chair Bruny.
Present.
Chair Chris Will.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Haskins Sutton.
Here.
Trustee Isnar.
Okay, thank you so much. Next is the approval of the agenda. Are there any questions or any modifications before we ask for a motion? Alright.
Do we need a motion to add to two things that are being carried over?
The informational items and.
Given the thought that they might be there already on this agenda, but thank you for the question.
Oh, okay, I knew they were under.
Under the, okay, alright.
So, moved.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next will be the audience to, to patrons and partition, partitioners. That'll be a five minute limit. Like to invite the public to raise their hand in the chat or approach of the podium with the opportunity to address the board. They must state their name and address for the record before making any comment or question or asking any question. Do we have anyone from the public?
We have no one.
Alrighty.
There is no one online.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Thank you, Dr. Moser. Okay, moving on then, for recognitions and presentations, there are none scheduled this evening. Item seven, there are also no communications scheduled for this evening. So, with that, we'll go ahead and move to the Board Committee reports and just also note that Vice Chair Bruny will be giving the community engagement presentation on behalf of Trustee Brown as well as the Board Finance Committee report. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair Criswell. I'll start with the, the Community Engagement Committee of the Board Trustees met on March the 8th via Zoom. Under the leadership of Trustee Roslyn Brown, she was joined by Trustee Ash, me and Dr. Bartunik. At this first meeting, it was agreed to work on a mission statement for the committee that would tie the work to the KC KCC strategic plan. And we've talked about some possible short-term and long-term goals for future meetings. We will continue to meet regularly on the second Tuesday of each month. For those who want to come and join us, and please watch for future reports of our progress. And then moving to the Finance Committee, met on Monday, March the 7th, the monthly financial reports were reviewed and approved for passing on to the entire board at the March meeting. Additional high school course fees were also approved for passing on to the entire board. A draft contract with PVAG Architects was reviewed for work on the KCK Community Health, Community Education, Health and Wellness Center. Dr. Moser presented some exterior sculptures replacement on the campus. The president also reported on two possible land donations, which were approved and discussed and approved for full board discussion with the confirmation of needing zoning changes and price for installation of some proposed billboards. We got updates on the downtown location, complete on a thorough update on the fundraising and an update on the housing project. Mr. Beach reported that the COVID-19 drawdowns will be complete before the May 2022 deadline and, and they total $11 million. And the college has awarded $23,000 so far under the Kansas. And the college has awarded twenty-three thousand so far under the Kansas Promise Act. And the announcement was made about the financial training for the Board of Trustees, which was held on March tenth at four thirty. That ends my report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chair Bruni. Let's see, other reports? No others? All right, thank you so much.
Just, just an update that the, oh, we will be attending the KACC. I thought Trustee Ash was going to say Fight Data Kappa and KACC team meeting on Friday, April first. So that will take place before we meet again, and maybe we'll have something to report about KACC and Fight Data Kappa at the April meeting.
Wonderful, wonderful. Good news. All right, thank you so much. All right, any others? Okay, in that case, let's see, let's see, at this point in time, we would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Second.
Home favor.
Bye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay, next will be the Student Senate Report, and this should be presented or will be presented by the Student Senate Cabinet.
Madam Chair, they are on spring break this week, so.
All right.
Report.
Okay, all right, my mistake. Okay, excellent. Moving on then to Dr. Moser's President's Report, please.
Great, thank you. And as you can see, we have several items on the agenda this month, so I'm gonna keep it brief. I always start off with the reporting of COVID incidents on campus or at the college at all locations. I'm really pleased to report that since February fifteen, there have been very, very minimal incidents. For employees, there have only been three, three incidents total, two positive and one close contact. And for students, there have only been seven incidents in the last four weeks, three positive and two close contacts. So that's really good to report. Later on the agenda, I'll have my recommendation for the college moving forward in the unfinished business portion of the agenda. If you haven't checked out our website lately, I would encourage you to do so, and you will find out that there are only twelve days remaining until our HLC visit. I know everyone's excited about that. Where's Mr. Pope? He's got to be jumping up and down. So I'm online with, but the college, we are ready. We are definitely ready for that visit. And I'm sure Jerry will have some additional information later. I have a couple of special recognitions. I want to congratulate Dr. Tammy Bartunick. Tammy was recently selected to participate in the Leadership Kansas 2022 Cohort. So I know she'll do a great job with that and represent us well and bring back some, some wonderful things going on across the state. So congratulations, Tammy. Also, very recently, Ms. Gabriela Flores was appointed to the Board of Directors for the Wyandotte Health Foundation. So I think she's an excellent choice for that, and I believe she begins her term in April. So congratulations, Gabby. Also, because KCKCC has been on probation with the Higher Learning Commission, the college's Veteran and Military Student Services Center was required to undergo a targeted risk-based review by the Kansas Commission on Veteran Affairs, and they are the body that allows us to grant VA funds for our students. So I'd like to thank Mr. Wade Abel and Jerry Pope and others who did a great job putting that report and that visit together. And we, we passed with flying colors, I will say. Even we received a letter of recommendation from our HLC liaison, Mr. Mar, Dr. John Mar. And then not needing special recognition, but just as an FYI, I was recently nominated and appointed to the Executive Board for the Wyandotte Economic Development Council. Among other things, this will allow KCKCC the opportunity to become closer and earlier engaged with this attraction and business retention opportunities and being able to really tell potential businesses coming to Wyandotte County the services we can provide in educated education, technical, customized training, et cetera. So I think that will be good moving forward. Again, just a quick and friendly reminder, if you have not yet read the HLC Assurance Argument, it's a good read. You have eleven more days to read it. So I'm sure Jerry can tell you where that is. And lastly, and I think significantly earlier today, President Biden signed the one-point-five-trillion-dollar FY 2022 omnibus spending bill. There are a lot of good items in there for community colleges. One of the items increases the maximum annual Pell by four hundred dollars annually. So that's sixty-eight ninety-five. So that helps. We could always help our students more, but that is a significant step. Increase twenty million dollars for federal work-study. Ninety-six million dollars for strengthening historically black colleges and universities, Hispanic-serving institutions and other minority-serving institutions. And I would say each year we are getting closer and closer to being recognized as an HSI. Forty million dollars increase for federal trio programs, and we are already working with Merchant McIntyre, our grant writer out of Washington DC, in reapplication for some of the trio programs. And then a lot to the sciences and research, but really pleased to see that bill. And later on, I will give another specific example how the bill will help KCKCC. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moser. Any questions for Dr. Moser at this time?
Little approval report. Second.
On favor.
Hi.
I. You opposed? Okay, thank you again. Motion carries. All right, moving on then to the Vice President of Academic Affairs Report, Mr. Jerry Pope.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you're enjoying this nice spring day, and I think we have a few more. I'll just call attention to just a couple of things in the report for academic affairs that I was really excited about and proud about. One, we continued our tradition, our trend from last year of offering some really robust Black History Month sessions in the Learning Commons, and so you can see about them there. The Writing Club hosted a read-in, which I thought was pretty, pretty wonderful, and you can see an example of the flyer that was created by some of the students and a little bio of the students. So kudos for them for doing that. And then in the Division of Arts Communications and Humanities, a couple of things happened, really interesting, really interesting things this past month. The Accelerated Learning Program of the Community College of Baltimore County conducted two workshops for some of our advisors, our developmental reading faculty and English faculty, and they were working specifically on helping us build out our corequisite reading and writing model that we worked on through negotiations this year. So these are the group of people that started that and are continuing to do it and are being very successful with it. So I thought that was really good that we were able to work with those folks. The Art Department hosted a art day, so we're back to doing that. There were about eighty-five or ninety USD five hundred, so only from District five hundred art students. It was led by our Professor Clinton Ricketts, who's a coordinator and the art gallery coordinator, Shai Perry. It was just a really, a really great event. I got the opportunity to introduce and to welcome everyone, and it was exciting to see those students here, especially interested in art. I've mentioned in a couple of meetings that we were the recipient of the Ella Fitzgerald Charitable Foundation Music Department Scholarship. Our student, Kristen Anderson, won it last year. It was inaugural. He applied to go on to get his bachelor's degree. He was accepted, and I didn't put this in the report, but he was accepted to the University of North Texas, which is one of the preeminent jazz schools in the country. Because of our relationship and Dr. Justin Bennett's relationship with the Ella Fitzgerald Foundation, Kristen is going to be able to continue receiving that scholarship as he works towards his bachelor's degree. So that's really exciting news as we do that. And then our new Ella Fitzgerald scholar is listed here and in that area, and I apologize, I don't have the name right in front of me, but congratulations. Career and tech ed, culinary arts are going to be preparing the food and catering for the Hall of Fame event, and if you've been to that, that's a really fun event, and they do a great job catering that. There's some scholarships that I won't go into naming them, but you can see those in this area. We are working to, with the Kansas Department of Commerce to kind of begin growing out, growing and developing a registered apprentice program, so not only for medical assistant students, but also for many of other programs across the college. So I'm real excited about that initial meeting and continuing that. Speaking of HLC, Professor Chris Ball in the Administrative Office Program was reappointed as a peer reviewer, so for four more years, so congratulations. And Chris was very helpful to us as we wrote our own argument. And then finally, just call out attention to Dr. Kira Nair, Coordinator of the Education Department Program and Director of our KCKCC Step Up Program. She made a presentation along with K-State and some others in Chicago at the National Association of Professional Development Schools. So some really fun and exciting things going on that I tried to outline, the deans tried to outline in this report. And at this point, I would take any questions that you have, and I can provide answers tonight. I will. If not, I'll take a note and find answers since I can.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Any questions for Mr. Pope or any comments?
Jerry, I don't have a question, but I have a request.
Certainly.
I think in three different reports or documents, I've read about the term corequisite courses.
Uh huh.
And could you at the next meeting, or maybe you could just make a written report to the board as to what that entails? I kind of had the feeling it was something to do with, it's to help in developmental education?
Yes.
And I'm not asking you to do that tonight. I don't want to catch you by surprise, but just, you know, the board is very interested in how we're working with developmental education, the progress we're making. It sounds like this is a pilot program of some kind. And could you just, again, if you want to make a written report, that's fine, but just let the board know a little bit more about what core requisite courses are.
Certainly, I'll make a note and I'll do that next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Pope, you know, not wanting to put you on the spot, maybe Dr. Tiffany is on or something, but I think that's a great accomplishment that we're working with Advent Health to get this registered apprenticeship program for medical assistance. But I wasn't sure what, what does that mean, a registered apprenticeship program for medical assistance?
So, Dr. Moser, can I lean on you to talk a little bit about the Registered Apprenticeship Program in the state of Kansas?
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. So a registered apprenticeship is an opportunity for the students to have learning that takes place in the classroom or in the labs located at the college. But then they also have an opportunity to learn on the job, and as they're learning on the job, they are signing off on, their supervisors are signing off that they are meeting the outcomes for other specific coursework. So some of the beginning work in this example would be taking place in the classroom with medical assistant. But then they would go and they would work in the office as a medical assistant, and they would be teaching, we call it learn and earn, right? So they're learning and they're earning money at the same time. So it's a great way, especially for adults and non-trad students, to get college credit, get a college degree, but also get field-related experience at the same time. I'll use probably the, the biggest model that we're working with in that at this time is the, you know, we talk about the FAME, the Federation for Advanced Manufacturing Education. In that model, instead of the students being on campus five days a week and learning in our classrooms and training on our lab equipment, they will be on campus Monday and Tuesday all day long, and they will spend Wednesday, Thursday and Friday with an employer. In this case, the employer selects them to be a participant in the FAME curriculum and the FAME program. So they get the best of both worlds, really. They get classroom hands-on learning, they get experience in our labs, and they can put that experience to work and learn even further at a place of employment. So there's different models of apprenticeship. There's a college-based model. There's a business-based model and some others where it depends on who is the lead in the providing the instructions.
Paid?
It is paid. These are paid.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Moser.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we're going to pursue this in multiple areas. You'll see it coming during this next year. We're going to be looking at it and other models because of some other opportunities that are available through the Kansas Department of Commerce in their Office of Internship and Apprenticeship.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Moser. Thanks, Dr. Moser, and thank you, Mr. Pope. Anything else from Mr. Pope before we move on? Okay.
Report. Second.
Second.
On favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right. So, uh, the, the report is approved. Excuse me. Next is the Vice President of Student Affairs Report by Dr. Chris Myers.
Well, good evening, Chair Criswell, trustees and President Moser. It's my second board meeting already. Seems time flies. It really does. So.
You're a veteran.
I'm a veteran at it. Yeah, so very, very happy to be here, fully transitioned into Kansas City after going back and forth from Washington, but I'm, it's good to be back home. And I have several things I'd like to point out on the report. We have several major initiatives going on in student affairs related to completing the spring semester and also getting ready for the fall semester. And I wanted to highlight a couple of those. One that you're very aware of is our Strategic Enrollment Management Plan. In May, at the May meeting, we'll provide a full report of that, but during that time, during right now, we're spending a lot of time building dashboard reports and summary data to show how the enrollment trends and retention trends have occurred over the last couple of years. Being very mindful of, of how the, how the COVID pandemic has impacted that. Couple of things I can share with you right now, because we're starting to really pull, start to look at some numbers for the fall two thousand and two semester. We are have for fall, the fall two thousand and two semester, we have nine hundred and seventy-two applications over a previous three-year average. That's up twenty-seven percent. And if you do the two-year average pre-COVID, it's up twenty percent. And so that right now is looking good in terms of continuing to grow, grow the enrollment. We held study, we're holding study this spring. But in terms of what we're seeing, those enrollment trends, that's somewhat suspected if, considering what we know about COVID and the impacts on students. More students want to stay local. They're looking for affordable options. And there's tremendous pent-up demand in terms of students who, students or potential students who decided to take out the last two years. So really, the opportunity for us is to maximize on that yield, and we have a couple of dishes that will be, be put into place very rapidly. One is we're going to start text messaging all admitted students, so they will start getting text messages. It's a very effective way to reach out to students, encouraging them to make advising appointments as early as possible and as early as possible. One thing that we also know is that the sooner that a student enrolls and applies to, rolls, the more likely they're going to go to school there. So that is one of the strategies that we'll be implementing. In addition to some accelerated email campaigns to prospective students who may not have applied or have incomplete applications, reminding them it's not too late to come to KCKCC. There's, I think it's really opportunity for us to maximize on that. The other thing that I wanted to point out that as we're looking at our admitted to enroll students, last, last fall, we were, we, we had fifty percent of our applied students enrolled. In twenty twenty-one, we had a forty-two percent, so we had an eight percent jump, and so that's also showing that students are making good choices in terms of great selections of quality education here at KCKCC. And so that's also showing that students are making good choices in terms of great selections of quality education here at KCKCC. And the 21 average is back to the previous average prior to prior to COVID. So between more applications, more students choosing to enroll, I think we have a tremendous opportunity here. The one qualifying thing I would, I would put out there in terms of role of management is often when you do have up taken applications, typically you see a lower yield than a minister's, but that was pre-COVID. And so I think we have a much, we have a much more things that are going to in our favor in terms of that. And so between now and through the summer and fall, that's really where our law of emphasis is going to be in terms of bringing more awareness to the campus for students, but also encouraging students to enroll early and enroll often because we know that's the best way for their success. The other thing relate to our major priorities, as we've, you've heard many of this, is Centennial Hall is coming. On April 1, we will start taking our full application process for residents for for Centennial Hall. We're very excited about that. This happens to be Nicole Wilburn over there. She's our Director of Residents Life. She's a veteran compared to me. She started in December after a really extensive career in in residence life and housing at the University of Kansas, and we're really excited to have her on board. And so we've created a task force that's really focusing on the programmatic aspects of residents' life. You know, the construction's coming, but thinking about all those different policies, procedures and services that are going to be essential as we bring on a new type of housing environment on our campus. So we're, we've had a kickoff meeting earlier last week about this, and we're going to do more of that. The other thing related to the previous question comment is Career Connected Learning. You've heard of our handshake, which is our career services portal for students. That's going to be our first major release of a job board for students, for for current students and alumni students. That will be web-based and placed out, placed out on April 1. We'll be inviting we'll be inviting employers. We have a long list of employers. Many of them came from you in terms of folks that want to provide job opportunities for students while they're enrolled or while they're graduating or completing programs. And so on April 1, we will start our campaign to those individuals, encouraging them to post jobs with a full release of the system by May 1 to our students, if not sooner. But it's looking good. That will hit that, we'll hit that, we'll hit that target date, May 1 without a problem. Couple of things related to that. April 7 is our Higher Blue Career Fair. That will be at the Tech Center, focusing on tech programs. And then on April 20, we'll have a general Higher Blue Fair here on the main campus. The other thing I wanted to mention is we've been doing a lot of work related to commencement. We are intending to have a in-person commencement, two sessions, 2 o'clock and 7 o'clock on May 19. We've been doing a lot of work to make sure that we can fit everybody into the into the fieldhouse for that. And so we are working on those details to make sure that we have about a capacity of 2,000 folks, full fire marshal capacity of the fieldhouse, about 2,500, but given social distancing considerations, we're pretty confident that we can fit everybody for those two graduation sessions in there. Initially, we're going to have an RSVP process for students to sign up guests. And and based on capacity, we're going to limit that at six, but we'll have provisions for students who have larger guests to request more seats with with information about when we'll award those seats. Because we think, we think in terms of going to RSVP, RSVP process, they'll also encourage more students to sign up early for commencement. And we'll do everything we can to make sure that we do not prohibit someone from not participating. But I think we'll be pretty confident in terms of of getting that there. A lot of details to be had, obviously, going into a commencement, commencement in an era like this. But everyone's very excited to get back and celebrate our students. Couple of points I'd like to bring up, a couple of things I'm highlighting. We mentioned a little about the military, our military veterans are doing some wonderful work. One of the things they're doing for Women's History Month is they're working with the Cosmetology Department here at KCKCC to provide free services for homeless veterans. And so that's a program that's coming up later, which we're really proud of. And then you've also seen some of the, some of the media about Blue's Kitchen or Food Bank. They started doing cooking demonstration, weekly cooking demonstrations with the culinary students this month and last month, which have been very popular in terms of taking ingredients from the, from the food bank and showing students how they could prepare fresh meals at home and stuff. So that's been really fun to participate. There was one day was waffles, which I was really excited about. It's about the waffles down the hallway. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, just real quick. First of all, thank you so much, Dr. Myers. We certainly do appreciate your report. Real quick, on the employer job postings that you mentioned, are you going to be setting up some kind of mechanism to track, to track success rate of that? Or what is your plan for that?
Yeah, so the the system we're purchasing handshake is, it's a comprehensive career management system for universities. And so it provides those type of reports, we'll be able to do tracking. The other thing that we'll be doing as part of our career services is instituting a formal career placement survey. There's national standards that after, after people were certificate as a ways that you create reports. So when you see job placement rates or advancement onto other degrees and stuff like that, that is something that has not been historically done, but with this graduation season, we want to do that also.
Right. Excellent. Excellent. Okay. And then another real quick question, and sorry about all these questions. This one may need to actually be somewhat of a follow-up item. I noticed on, it's in the page 86 of the packet. I was looking at this and and I was looking actually at the March enrollment report, looking at the spring semester for 2022, and obviously for, you know, 2021, I mean, that's a wash and I get that. But for Amazon students, it looks like there were not any for spring 2022. And my question is, was the program temporarily discontinued? Because the reason I ask it is because on page 97, and this is actually part of Dr. Bar Tunic's content, but on 97, it speaks to a, the marketing is working with Amazon and KCKCC is a local college of choice, you know, to partner with them. So I'm just trying to understand, we went from eight to zero, which I get, and then zero again. But then we're part, then we're working on a marketing, if you will, a partnership, if you will. So did we discontinue it for a while? I mean, other than 2021, obviously, but with, I'm trying to understand what happened or if anything happened.
This is where I'm going to play the new card and leave the president Moser.
Yeah, thank you. That's a really good question, too. So if in the report, you see it listed as Amazon, those are classes and students enrolled at the Amazon facility. So as we went into COVID, those classes discontinued. So you'll see, that's why those numbers disappear. But Amazon and Tammy, you probably talked about this more later, but they offer enrollment tuition assistance, they'll pay for a employee's college, right? So we have been identified as a college of choice for Amazon, and that would be Amazon employees coming to KCKCC, enrolled in classes and programs versus where it says Amazon, that means we're teaching at their location.
Understood. Okay, okay, that that makes more sense now. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Does anyone have any additional questions for either Dr. Myers or Dr. Moser?
Trustee Chris, well, oh, go on, trustee Ash.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay. That is such a great idea, the outreach to the homeless veterans, women for the nail and hair care on the 29th. My question is, with them being homeless, how are we reaching them? How are they getting the word? How are they going to get to the tech center? Are we responsible for their transportation? Or are we having a mobile service and going to where they are?
I wish I knew the answer to that. Wade Abel, our Director of Military Services, has been working on this program. And I know they've worked, they're partnering with several veteran groups, so I'm sure those details have been addressed.
Oh, okay. I think it's a great, I, I think it's a great idea, a great community service. All right.
Yes, Dr. Meyer, I'm just curious, how's Taco Tuesday Taco Truck going on campus here? I know Shawnee was pretty excited about it. She was telling me about it when we were in Washington, but how's it going?
It, well, it went really well, but now we're on spring breaks, we're on a little break. But Andrea Wacox, Wacoxen, who's over there, our Director of Student Activities, is leading that effort. And reception was good. The biggest complaint we had was the line was too long. So that's kind of a good problem to have, right?
Good problem to have. Must be going well. Thank you.
But I think to your point, I really think it speaks to the need to figure out more substantial food, 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 a warm meal, lunch service for our campus.
You know, we talk about supporting students so they can be successful. That's a need.
You got to eat. You got to eat.
And I know Andrea could talk for an hour about it probably, but I think it, I think it was creative, a great idea to say, well, if we can get a truck that will agree to come up on campus, I think it's a great deal.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great over thing. It's great for the community. It helps support small businesses. And also exposes students to, to opportunities they might not have this walking, walking in class every day.
Thank you very much. Since Andrea's here, what about the new American Open House? What's, it sounded like quite a project and is that going to be? New American Open House. American Open House? Okay, thanks. All right.
Yeah, and I know they're, they're starting to have preliminary meetings to wind that up. So I know there's a couple of groups have been working on that, too. I'll be able to report on that next time.
Yeah, thank you. A great opportunity.
If I may, I'd just like to take an opportunity to really compliment Dr. Myers. He has jumped in with both feet, as you can tell very quickly. The career placement for our graduates and internship and jobs when they graduate is something that we've been wanting to work on for a long time. And and he's getting that up and moving, and it will be in, you know, it will be in process very soon. So lots of good work going on. Thank you. Thank you, President.
All right. Thank you so much.
For the report.
Thank you.
Second.
Favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Myers, as well as Dr. Moser. Next is the Vice, excuse me, Vice President for Strategic Initiatives and Outreach Report, please, Dr. Bar Tunic.
Hi, everybody. So if you like, I can give a little bit more follow-up to the Amazon question from before. So we have had meetings with Amazon and we are continuing our relationship with them. And we were notified a couple of months ago, but it was embargoed information at that time that we were selected as one of their local educational partners. We with Amazon did a joint press release as well as some other marketing to highlight our partnership with Amazon. And they also, Amazon, retooled their Career Choice Scholarship Program where now students may select any credit-bearing program or class, when in the past it was limited to a specific approved area that Amazon had approved. Now it's open to any credit-bearing program or class, which is huge. Also, now after 90 days of employment, Amazonians can take advantage of this Career Choice Program, when in the past, I believe it was six months. So they've really taken a good look at this. I'm assuming, listened to their partners or employees and decided to retool and relaunch this. So we're really pleased that this is happening here with us at KCKCC. And we are, of course, talking with them about getting classes back into their facility once they've perhaps changed or edited their protocols for COVID. So we are having those discussions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. So I don't know if you noticed when you came into the room or if those online saw our new Centennial branded table scarf. Super excited. You'll be seeing more use of our logo because we launched that live here two months ago with the Board of Trustees. So you'll notice more and more of our Centennial logo getting infused into a lot of our marketing pieces and events. Wanted to point that out. So I'm really excited that we are working with the Legends for some marketing events coming up. Really excited. We have some big plans with them. You'll see this coming for summer and fall recruitment cycles. Working with Chris and his team as well, of course, we are taking over that billboard at Legends. If you recall where that large billboard is, that will become the KCKCC billboard for about nine months. So we're working on that language and what that look will be. We also will be their official sponsor of the Legends Back to School Events that they have this summer, getting students ready to go back to school. So it'll be back to school, you know, with KCKCC or similar language like that. What I'm most excited about, though, is we will have a pop-up enrollment slash alumni event at the Legends. So it may be, if you're familiar, that green space that's kind of over there by
Dave and Buster's?
Yes. It's highly trafficked. So we may have that green space as a pop-up event where we can potentially do admissions, enrollment, like right there on site, get it all done at once. We'll also work with the foundation to have alumni hopefully be there. So we're still tweaking and working on the details, but I'm super excited. I think that could be a game changer for us. So I'm excited.
Speaking of Legends, are we still going to be, this is trustee Sutton, and we're going to still be involved with the Monarchs?
We are in discussions for that, trustee, but I do not have anything specifically planned yet at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Right, right. Other than some of our students have the opportunity to apply for internships with the Monarchs. So go ahead then.
Okay, thank you. And also, again, working with Chris's team, we launched a re-engagement campaign for student enrollment. We went back to pre-COVID, which was spring of 2019. We're also working with our IE, polled students that were registered, who didn't graduate and who hadn't registered or attended since spring 2019. And we're doing a targeted campaign to re-engage that group of students. So we'll see what, how that looks for us here shortly. And then, one thing I've talked about this off and on for a little while is the Cascade Website Editor. We had a request from some staff and faculty to have the opportunity to edit their own webpages. So working with Web Services and IT, we came up with a way that now through Cascade Website Editor, faculty and staff have ability to edit their own content of their webpage, make the edits they want, submit it, and then Web Services can automatically get that posted right to the website so that there isn't perhaps a delay of a couple of days depending on workload. So as soon as those edits are created, marketing will of course review them, make sure that hopefully we catch any grammar, any typos that might be there, if there are any, and then we'll push it live. So right now, last number I had last week was 28 folks had signed up and are going through the training to do that. And then one last thing I'll share, and I'll need to ask Randy for his assistance. I would like to play you an upcoming radio ad.
Think about college, need a few extra classes this summer? Get ahead and stay ahead at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Start your summer with KCKCC, kick off your career or prepare to transfer to a four-year university. With upgraded classrooms, technology and study spaces, they've transformed their campus for you and offer tons of online options. Expect new experiences at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Summer classes begin June 6 and roll today at kckcc.edu.
So that will start running here the next, I think, next week. That'll start being on the air. With that, if you have any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Bar Tunic? Excellent report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have one, Tammy. I saw a photo. Are we building another house?
We are.
Up in the same area? Flavmore Road, do you know?
Recall the address, but I think it's in that same area.
Yeah, I see one that's in the construction up there. I wondered if, if we were doing that. I haven't seen our vehicles up there, but.
Yeah, just finished the floor trust system and the subfloor.
Yeah, excellent. Good stuff.
Dr. Bartunik, if I may, not to put you on the spot, can you talk about some of the strategic initiative items you've been working with, with Merchant McIntyre and the new earmark requests with the, with the health and wellness and then the construction side, just as a little update?
Sure. Yes, we have been working with Merchant McIntyre for about the past year to help us with some negotiating at the federal level of funding that's available. So I'm working with them to work on gathering data to submit a construction program request. So in doing so, looking at jobs EQ data, wine county-specific, Kansas region, KC region and Kansas as well. We also are working to identify individuals or organizations we can reach out to that will provide us with letters of support for that. So we will be wrapping up kind of the data this week and working with them to create the letters of support and also putting together the request for funding for construction technology. And I do believe that funding request will be about the $2 million range. And that will include equipment and supplies, like heavy equipment that I'm hoping I get to drive.
And then she also, she also just wrapped up the the language and for the request for the health and wellness request for downtown, too. So a lot of the similar activities, so.
Okay, anything else for Dr. Bartunik? Any questions? I have a motion for approval of the report, please.
They'll move.
Second.
Well, in favor?
I.
And then you posed, right, motion carries. Thank you again, Dr. Bartunik. We appreciate you. Okay, moving on for the, to the Chief Financial Officer Report. Okay, moving on for the, to the Chief Financial Officer Report to be presented by Mr. Beach.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yeah, again. I was, I was gonna tease Dr. Bartunik that if she wants to get behind the wheel of some heavy equipment, if it was to snow again this year, she might be the only one at the college behind the wheel of one of our snowplows. Hopefully, we are well past in snow at this point.
Amen.
You have my report before you. Just a couple of quick highlights. I'll try to keep this short because I know we have a very full agenda. And to date so far for this semester, we've dispersed about 700 or 978,000 in COVID emergency relief grants. This is the ones that go directly to students to help benefit them. We are in the process of doing another round of that COVID relief emergency grant to our students for this semester as well. As mentioned in the, in trustee Bruni's report, we, we receive through what we call HERF2, HERF3 funds. These are the ones that came through Carissa and ARPA as opposed to the first round that came through CARES Act. So we received as a college about $11.2 million total in institutional support or relief monies. 9.9 million of that approximately will be the grand total that we will draw down in this fiscal year by the mid-May deadline cutoff. We've drawn down almost half of that. At this point in time, we have about 5 million left to draw down during the month of March and April in order to meet that that deadline. And so we, we do have a drawdown schedule. We did not want to draw those monies down all at once. We have the expense, the lost revenues and the additional expense due to COVID calculated documented for the college to support those draws. And so we, from an auditing perspective, as we undergo our next year's audit, we'll, we'll be able to do just fine during that audit process relative to those monies. And as reported in earlier board meetings, this basically means that we don't need to worry about filing the extension for, for these monies. We just recently provided training, the annual training, we, this was the first opportunity for trustee Isnar then, but we also had a number of other trustees that elected to attend that training again and use it as a refresher course. And we are in the process of getting that training manual reviewed one more time and for updates before we send it out. But we will be sending it out to the group in its, in its final reviewed form. And we'll try to get that again on an annual basis, just make sure it's updated as best as we can. New information as it becomes available and get it out to you. The budget process for the college continues on time. On the timeline, we have the budget worksheets for the operating budget of the college compiled. And that's before and being worked on by members of president's cabinet. We also have the strategic opportunities, new asks reporter. Sometimes here within the college, we just shorten it up and say new asks. And that is, is ready to be, that's all compiled and it's in the process of being evaluated and reviewed and prioritized by members of the president's extended cabinet for additional consideration. The new student housing project continues to move along and currently is about as a couple of weeks ahead of schedule as they continue to move through that project to completion. You have more details here in your report that I won't get into. We've compiled a short list of food service providers, both those that are nationally recognized as well as some of the local vendors that may be interested in coming and performing and providing food services here on campus. We'll be putting together an RFP that will go out to these organizations from which we will select a, a company to come onto campus to provide our food service vendors. I did put in here in more detail, just so the board is aware that one of the, one of the potential barriers to the larger national groups is that we don't have any type of a program here at KCKCC that requires a food plan. That's one of the things that attracts those big national providers as opposed to somebody local. The national providers are more stable, but, and we're hopeful that we'll still be able to attract some of them here. But the, the local vendors are the ones that will probably likely be more interested in providing the services. While there's also a little bit more volatility to their ability to do it. But we'll, we'll look at all of the proposals and evaluate them and select the, the best food vendor that we can provide here for the college.
Mr. Beach, may I just, so that you don't have to come back to this because I saw that and I was, you know, looking at that. And I know that that's, there's so many ways that you can go with the food. Do we have any idea what we're wanting? Have we talked to the students? We've done surveys or are just what, you know?
We haven't done any official service, surveys to the students. We will. There will also be students on part of the, on the selection committee of the RFP in order to have them be involved in this process and the selection. Right now, the biggest thing that we've heard from students relative to food service in the past as well as current, even more so currently is just more variety and options.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Our bookstore continues to do well. They, their revenues continue to climb relative to where they were last year at this point in time. That's a good sign because in most, most bookstores around the country, if you don't have significant increases in enrollment, your revenues are actually kind of shrinking year over year, over year. So we're excited to see where they will land relative to how they're performing right now. Our facilities crew continues to just tear up the area as far as getting new projects done. I don't mean that literally. Whatever they're tearing up, they're repairing. They're doing a wonderful job with their projects and getting a lot done. I've just been really impressed with, with the job that they're doing in trying to fix up, maintain, get regularly scheduled maintenance programs in place in order to minimize and deter the concept of deferred maintenance. And of course, our college police does a wonderful job providing this, the safety and security here on our campus. And so we, we are grateful to them. As far as the financial statements, the college, I'll just cover, cover these real close, real quickly on the monthly financial summary. Our total assets were at the end of February were $133.7 million. This was a decrease during the month of 3.6 million. This is to be expected because our expenses go out faster than our revenue inflows primarily due to things like financial aid. You'll notice that we had a very large burn, which is very typical for financial aid as well as some of the COVID money that we, we put out. 45.7, almost 6 million in liabilities. This is a decrease of a million. This, these are just timing differences. This just means we paid off some of the liabilities that had accumulated over the, over the month, again, really due to timing differences of when bills are presented and paid and, and, and goods and services are purchased on behalf of the college. The net position 88, almost 88.2 million. And this is a decrease of 2.4, which again is really the net difference between the decrease in assets plus and the cash that was used to pay down liabilities. It's really reflective of the net operating result of the college, which is really more reflective of the revenues that we brought in, less the expenses that went out. And so again, you can see that for the most part during the month, expenses exceeded revenues by basically $2.4 million, which again is typical for the month of February. Total revenues year to date, 65.5 million. This was, we received 5.2 million in revenues during the month of February. This is primarily due to 2.46 million in student financial aid and 2.5 million in institutional COVID draws that we drew down from, from the, from the Department of Education. Operating expenses year to date are 48 points. So actually that's total expenses for the college, 48.7 million dollars. This is a four, an 8.4 million dollar increase during the month. Again, most of this, a big chunk of this is financial aid over and above our normal operating expenses as well as COVID money. If we backed out the relative expenses during the month, our monthly burn was closer to, I believe, I thought I had it in here, but it was roughly about 4.6 or 7 million dollars if I remember correctly, if you take out financial aid. I do have, there's 3.7 without it. Oh, that's compared to 3.7 for January. Sorry. Moving on. The, the continued risks, of course, to the college continues to be the issues of enrollment and managing our way through COVID. We're hopeful that we're on the tail end of this, that we'll see an increase. We, we do believe that enrollments will return and we have a very aggressive, long term and short term enrollment strategy in place for the college in order to recoup enrollments. That is basically my report. Does, are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Beach? Okay, well, well, thank you again, Mr. Beach. We certainly do appreciate you and all the work that you and your team have done and also the, the finance committee and working with Mr. Beach.
Approval of the report. Second.
No in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. Moving on then to the Chief Human Resources Officer Report to be presented by Ms. Christina McGee.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
See, I have my report in front of me, or in front of you. I will just highlight a couple of items in my report. So this month and continuing months, we are planning for the Employee Recognition Years of Service Event. So we are planning for that as a luncheon on May 6th. So more information to come, but we are in the process of planning and our, our small but mighty team will be meeting not just HR, but media services and marketing will be meeting actually this week to discuss further planning. So we're looking forward to that event and looking forward to it being in person this year. Hopefully, there will not be any increases to COVID, but we're planning on an in-person event this year in May. So looking forward to that. And then also, just in our training and development area, our Talent Development Manager is continuing to have her discussions with key stakeholders to discuss training and development so that we can start to put together a strategy and a plan for training college wide. So she's continuing to have those discussions and it sounds like they are going well so far. And we also completed the supervisor training. We were scheduled, or we had 10 required new supervisors that were required to attend, but we actually had in between 20 and 29 supervisors attend certain sections of the training program last, I believe it was last week. So we had good numbers between 20 and 29 supervisors that participated. And we got some really good feedback from those courses. So we will continue to have new supervisor training, but also allow for opportunities for additional supervisor training throughout the course of the, of the year. In addition to that, in our employment area, we have, and I believe I mentioned this in our meeting last month, we were looking at a new vendor for our background check. So we have solidified that vendor and now we are going through training to get that, the new vendor incorporated into our process and up and running. So we will no longer have our paper forms going back and forth with confidential information. The, the applicants or the new employees will complete everything online and it goes directly through our applicant tracking system through verified first. So we're excited to have that onboard and should have implementation ready by the end of March. In addition to that, we have some follow ups with regards to the listening sessions. We are looking at ways to, and in some ways started implementation, but not ready to announce just yet. But how we can reduce the time it takes to complete the application, also looking at using Microsoft Forms to eliminate some of those paper forms that we currently have that are being scanned back and forth to HR, to the hiring committee. So just trying to reduce the amount of paper and time it takes to complete certain tasks throughout the, the hiring process. And we are also in addition to that, looking at how we considering that the current market, there are more jobs and there are individuals to fill those jobs. We have to be more competitive. So we're looking at how we can update our recruiting page, HR recruiting page. What can we do differently to source for applicants and just better assess the, the job boards that we have now? So we're looking at doing that as a, as a result of the listening session, but also some things that HR just wanted to do in the future. So continuing to move forward and just improve upon our hiring, recruitment and onboarding process. And then in the areas of Center for Equity and Inclusion and Multicultural Engagement, Gabby and Dr. Ream are continuing to participate in different Title IX trainings to become more skilled in that area. And they're continuing to, to output different training sessions to our employees. And that will continue throughout the year. But just listed there are a few of the training sessions that they've done in, in partnership with HR, but also with the Center for Teaching Excellence. So that really concludes my report. I will answer any questions that you may have for me this evening.
Yes, Ms. McGee, you've mentioned the Title IX training. Is that going to be somewhat of a train the trainer so that we can, so that the two participants can cascade that to the various additional participants, so to speak?
So we have a Title IX Coordinator and a Deputy Coordinator. Dr. Ream is the Deputy Coordinator. So she's attending the Title IX Coordinator as a part of her function. And then Gabby is just getting more information because the Title IX, the Deputy Title IX Coordinator reports to her. So she wants to be knowledgeable in that area, even though she's not assigned to a Title IX function. With regards to training the trainer, that's where we'll see more training for individuals that are investigators. And that's where we'll have train the trainer for our investigators. But the Title IX training is really specific to the deputy or anyone that oversees those areas.
Some chance. Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate your clarification. Okay, any other questions or comments for Ms. McGee?
If I, if I may, again, this is not in response to Christina's report, but something I failed to mention earlier in my report. And because it is a cabinet level position, I just wanted to update the board that we have launched the search for the Permanent Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management. A search team has been convened and the, we'll do a first review of applicants beginning March 28th. And it will remain open until filled. I just wanted to provide that update as a cabinet position.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Mosier. Okay, anything else for Ms. McGee or Dr. Mosier? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the report.
They'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
You posed, motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. McGee.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. Moving on to the Chief Information Officer Report, we have Mr. Peter Gabriel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm looking out the window and I'm wishing I was outside with the nice sunlight that we have. Um, you have my report in front of you. I have just a few things I wanted to mention. First, the web advisor is gone and the transition to self-service is finished. And just wanted to thank everyone that helped with that transition. The second thing I wanted to mention is just to thank you to media services. They always, they have a number and had a number of events that they either set up, recorded or streamed last month. It doesn't look like the next two months are going to slow down for them. The Highlander Perceptive Content is, more may know that server and application upgrade is scheduled to kick off in the first two weeks of April. Basically, it'll start off with the review of our current environment, the week of April 19th. And then a development of a non-production or test environment, the week of May 9th. And once that environment is developed, then we'll go through testing basically the week of, through the end of the week of June 24th. And then after that, we'll have like a pre-go live review and then a go-live of the new environment later in the week of July 4th. And then we're working on a couple of other projects that Dr. Myers mentioned earlier, ERAS Life and Handshake. We've set up single sign-on for both of those applications and our database admins are currently working on the data upload or data feeds from colleague to both of those applications. I have to short little story. I was mentioning to Sher who our database administrator or senior database administrator is. I joked with him the other day that I didn't see any new integrations or data feeds that we needed to do for any new applications. And then I had to go back the next day about midway through the day and apologize to him because I just stepped out of a meeting that requested a new data feed for a new application upgrade. So just a little joke we had here because I I thought we don't see any on the horizon. We can actually take a, you know, take a breath here in the next few weeks, but the that's gone. So.
Once you get spoiled.
Right?
We had to update our domain. We called our wildcard certificate. It's a wildcard because we can use anything in front of dot Casey K C C. So it's a certificate that we we use. Instead of having multiple certificates for each website, we just have the one that we've renewed that and updated on all the server or slash applications that utilize it. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, and it's probably only because I'm a geek, but we have a new tool that will help us in troubleshooting things. John Foltz is our Senior Network Engineer and he's developed or brought up a new tool that we can use that basically gives us the ability to speed test from any network, physical network connection or any wireless access point connection in any of the buildings back to their server room in that building. So it'll help us troubleshoot, you know, connectivity issues, data throughput, different things like that. We can help determine, you know, do we need to do something that dropped? Do we need to replace it? Do we need to move it to, you know, a different port, something like that? So if we're having issues, it's another tool we can use to test. So. Like I say, I'm excited about that one because we've needed something like that for a long time and the ability to, especially from the wireless access side to, you know, get a device connected to a specific access point and then test that access points connection back, not only to the closest network closet, but all the way back to the server room prior to going out to the internet. And we have that capability at main campus and also at the TEC and Pioneer location. So. With that, that's really all I had that I wanted to talk about. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Mr. Gabriel?
Not a question, Madam Chair, but I have a comment for my colleagues on page one hundred and twenty of our package, page two of Mr. Gabriel's report. At the top there, he's got the data regarding those that look in on our meetings. So he did provide that in February, what January's number was, and he's provided today what February's number was from the MEO analytics. So we had seven peak viewers for essentially forty-eight minutes. And on the Facebook analytics, analytics, three hundred and fifty-nine views, on-demand, three likes. Now, are those are those streaming on Facebook also, Peter? So are they seeing that live or is those three hundred and fifty-nine coming back later and watching it?
I would have to check with Randy to be sure. I know we're, we do stream to Facebook live. In fact, we were actually having some issues this evening, not with Facebook, but with YouTube and one of the others. But I would have to, I'll I'll get that and and we'll put that in there if those were live views or if they were locked into the fact.
But thank, thanks for providing that data because I know a number of us have, we've been kind of interested in how many are joining us in in our community engagement meeting. Chair Brown and Trustee Rooney and I, we had conversations about getting in and with and with Dr. Bartunik as well. Sorry, Timmy. You know, getting messaging out and how do we connect with, you know, a lot of them. Just curious is how many are trying to look in on what we're doing even from their from their initiative, you know, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Would it be helpful? I know we just started this and I don't know if we can go back and get the numbers, but moving forward, would it be helpful to have like the past three months' numbers, you know, the current month and the past previous students, just to kind of compare?
Yeah, it probably would to provide context and so forth. I think that probably would would be good.
Okay. Trustee Bernie, because Mr. Gabriel, we just want to make those numbers get bigger and bigger.
Right, right. Exactly. That would be great.
Yes, okay. And I just have a a comment and a question. Considering the heightened alert on everything, I appreciate your vigilance, you know, regarding cyber attacks and keeping us safe, our information safe, because that's on the mind of everyone with considering what's gone on nationwide and worldwide. And then another, a question I had, under Information Services, where it says Network Service states that self-service web availability is ninety-nine percent. I wasn't quite sure what that meant. Does it mean only one percent is being used or it works ninety-nine? I mean, I I just wasn't sure what that meant.
That that means it's available ninety-nine percent.
Of the time that the reliability of it? Oh, that's pretty good reliability. Okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, knock on wood, something may happen, but about the only time it goes down is we have a maybe five-minute window where we reboot the server to apply the monthly patches from Microsoft or something like that. So that's usually about the only time it goes down. I mean, we don't have a a power outage that lasts more than a couple of hours or something like that. So.
Well, that's that's quite an improvement of where it used to be. Of course, you know, technology all the way around is better, but that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Gabriel? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
You posed. Right. Motion carries. Thank you again, Mr. Gabriel. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. Now, moving on to unfinished business, I will first have the HLC update presented by Mr. Jerry Pope.
Good evening again. So I like to think two weeks from today, at this time, the HLC visit will be over. So it's it's roughly two weeks from now, March twenty eighth, twenty ninth, and we've been doing a lot of prep work across campus this this month. One of the things we've been hosting are some HLC Q and As, and I think we're going to do one for the Board or Trustees maybe next week. But we've, we've had around a hundred attendees each time, and most of those attendees have been virtual, but happily, we've had a lot of of interaction, a lot of really good questions and a lot of good discussion. My goal was to try to get the campus to practice for the visit and to practice talking about the things that we're doing and have done since our twenty twenty visit. We have two more scheduled. We took this week off just knowing that faculty are not around and a lot of people may decide to take vacations this week. So we did take this week off, but we have a couple of more next week. The HLC nuggets, so Marketing and Tammy's group helped create a really nice template. We've done six so far and there's a little quiz in each of those and each week, each one, we do a random drawing for winners. So we've had six winners. I think it's been really good. Again, we have about a hundred participants each time, maybe a little bit less. Not everybody gets every question right. So I think that's, I think it's kind of fun and we'll do tomorrow, we'll do two more this week and then one every day next week. So I'm just trying to get some excitement generated for this. We're also working on the agenda. I put together a draft agenda, sent it out to our site visit chair and she responded back that instead of two full days, they really only wanted a day and a half, which I think teams, you know, have some different ideas and about how long they want the visit to be, or perhaps it's because they were here two years before. And even though it's a comprehensive site visit, we do have some focus areas. So Dr. Moser and I worked on that this morning to hone it down to pretty much all day Monday. So we're starting at eight and we'll end at five with a couple of breaks in between and with a luncheon with the Board of Trustees on Monday and then Tuesday from eight to noon. And then after that, the team's going to go to their hotel and they'll work on writing up for us on Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday. And then at some point in the near future, we'll get their responses back. We'll have an opportunity to make any corrections of fact. And then they will send us their report once they get that finalized. Dr. Moser mentioned, if you want to read the HLC argument, we had forty thousand words. We were right around thirty-eight thousand. So I think we did a pretty good job. That is on our website. If you go to the website and there's the countdown, it says twelve days now, and there's a link that says more information. And if you click that link, it'll get you to the page that has the assurance argument. So it's there for everybody to read. And I also just want to point out briefly, the institutional effectiveness has a really nice webpage. The way I get to it is to just kind of Google institutional effectiveness. But if you do about, if you click on about at the homepage and then just kind of scroll down and see institutional effectiveness, and there's a lot of data that's there, a lot of survey data, a lot of enrollment data, some of which were required to post, others we do just for informational purposes. And we're going to work really hard to make sure all that is consistently updated. We're we're in the midst of our search for the Director of Institutional Effectiveness. I'm hopeful to have someone pretty soon. And we did hire a new research analyst. So I'm I'm excited about those opportunities. So I think that's just a brief update. I'll entertain any questions. We're all getting really excited. I'm not sleeping every night through the night. I wake up and I think, oh, have I done that? But that that's all good. So we're, we know we're really prepared. We did a good argument. We've done a lot of work. The faculty have done a tremendous amount of work on assessment and program review. No doubt, we have more work that we can do and we will do. We're certainly not a perfect institution yet, but we're so much we're we're so far along the way. I think it's really, really a good thing. So I'm excited for them to come. And I I told our chair I was excited to share for, not for me to share, but for the faculty, especially in the staff, to share the things that we've really worked hard on the last, the last two years.
Great. I have on my counter that luncheon for the board on Tuesday. You're saying now that's been moved up to Monday?
No, I I, yes, sir, I apologize. May, we're going to get that out and maybe it was lost in email or something, but because of the change that was requested by our site visit chair, we did, we we are going to have to change that to Monday.
Okay, thanks. It's going to be on Monday about that same time.
Yes, sir, at noon. It'll be at noon on Monday.
Still finalizing, I might add.
Sure.
Because we just received notice that it a day and a half versus a two full day.
Yes, that was a surprise for me.
Thanks.
Hey, anything else for Mr. Pope? Questions? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Pope. We appreciate you. Okay, moving on in unfinished business, the Casey K C C COVID nineteen safety recommendations presented by Dr. Mosier.
Right. Great. Thank you. Randy, I'm going to share a screen here. So earlier, I was mentioning how our numbers have decreased dramatically with both the number of COVID-related incidents and COVID-positive cases. So this information came off of the Wyandotte County COVID Hub. As you can see, it came off today. When we, let me see, move this out of the way. Excuse me a second. When they're looking at where we are today and where you look at the beginning of the pandemic, we are almost at the same spot. So our numbers are are very, very low at this time and they continue to decline. So this is the number of cases per day. So you can see the, just the daily trend analysis on that. And then I'm going to scroll here a little bit. This is the Wyandotte County scorecard as of today. It states medium, but when I look at the indicators, I see it as really very low. The trend in the number of daily cases is down to ten and that's over the the time period of February twenty-eighth through March sixth. The trend in percent positivity, that is something that everyone has had their eye on. A lot of people are saying when it gets below ten, an average of ten percent positivity, they're feeling comfortable. Some people have mentioned five percent. It also depends upon the age of the individuals on percent positivity rate. But we are staying at four percent and it's been that way for a little while. So super pleased with that. Trend in test turnaround time, sixteen hours. So there's less demand on the system. So we're getting responses back in a timely manner. Trend of number of tests per day, I see that has declined also, but down about two sixty-four. Trend in the Mid-America Regional Council hospitalizations, down to eighty-five. But when we're looking at for for our numbers, those two numbers are very important in in our decision-making process, I believe. I know there have been reports the last couple of days about an uptick in China, but we will just have to see where that goes. So with the information that we have had, both in our internal data and with the numbers that are being reported in Wyandotte County, which we have been typically higher than the other counties surrounding us, the college's recommendation is that again, we're in spring break right now. We want to allow some time for individuals to come back to spring break and see if we see any upticks in any trend. But as of March thirtieth, which would be the day after our HLC visit, my recommendation is that we move from masks required to masked welcomed. We don't want anyone to feel self-conscious about wearing the mask. So the marketing department and Tammy and her team has come up with the the mask welcomed terminology, which I like versus optional or recommended or or anything like that. So my recommendation to the board is if numbers continue to stay low as we approach March thirtieth, that we move to masks welcomed. The other item that it impacts in our current protocols is gatherings and gatherings related to where food is involved. So Cabinet will continue to work on this language, but we believe that we are at a point when we look at the capacity in a room, we want to make sure that, again, following CDC, that we can maintain a physical distancing of three to six feet within a room space where it can be continuously maintained. So when we look at room capacity, we'll be looking at at least a minimum of three-foot physical spacing. Individuals who are in the rooms, they can sit and enjoy food together. We're not recommending that we do service line cafeteria-style food or anything like that, but we do have like the employee recognition dinner or luncheon, I should say, coming up in May. It's being designed with a limited capacity so that we can work within these protocols and guidelines. And that we will continue to monitor that through the end of the spring semester. At the end of the spring semester or before, if necessary, then we would make changes as the data informs us to make changes. So that is my recommendation to the board.
Okay.
I would take any questions.
So if I'm understanding correctly, tonight, we would approve this plan then for, sorry, the end of March, it would change back to masks welcomed.
Yes.
We would have a special board meeting then if the data was to go in a different direction.
If the, so if the data stays low, we would make the decision tonight to approve moving to a mask welcomed language. If the data goes up, I would inform the board and but we would just not change the language. So I don't believe we would require an additional board meeting. I'd be glad to do that if if the board so desires. But I would inform the board that we have decided to But I would inform the board that we have decided to continue with the mask requirement at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I move, we approve the recommendation.
Second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. And again, that is if the data stays the same, the mask welcome language will be in place and the, the safety protocol will also be consistent with that strategy. Okay, thank you, Dr. Moser. We appreciate, and we appreciate the data too. That was very, very helpful. Sure. All right. Moving on then, additional high school course fees for fiscal year twenty twenty-three presented by Mr. Pope.
Thank you. The last page of your board packet has three programs that we did not include last month. We needed to have some further conversation with these programs. I use the same format, so I put in what the twenty-one, twenty-two course fees were, what the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed course fees, and I'm sorry if I didn't say this. This is for high school students in the Excel and CTE programs. We have reduced especially the bio manufacturing certificate. There were a lot of textbooks that were in Biology one oh five, and we decided to go the route that I talked about last month. Of the students will get those textbooks from the bookstore. And then in early childhood, those are e-textbooks that they get in the classroom. And so we did talk to our high schools and no high schools had any particular issues with these. So we just kept them the same, and for ease, I rounded them up to thirty dollars instead of twenty-nine ninety-nine. So those are the only changes that we're proposing or additions.
Okay, any, any questions for Mr. Pope on that? Okay, and we'll, we'll need to, to vote on this, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Approval of the additional high school course fees as presented by Mr. Pope.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Pope. We appreciate all your clarifications as well. Okay, and then moving on to, I know that we have some, some updates that we spoke about in the open session, the four o'clock open session. And then we have some, of course, we have the new business. But my question is, the two items that will not require a vote, that were just updates, that would be capital can campaign fund raising report as well as the downtown property incident report. Those should also be part of the unfinished business section. Is that correct?
Those are just informational items.
Right, so.
No action required.
Okay, and where in the agenda would you like for, for those to be in? Item twenty in the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, all righty, got it. Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to then, new business, the first one is the approval to vote in favor of PGA, PGA V Architects to provide architectural services for the Kansas City Kansas Community College Educational Health and Wellness Center, presented by Mr. Beach.
And if I may, before we get too far down the line from our discussion earlier tonight, we have learned that we, the language would be different. Mr. Beach will present the information, and then the vote tonight would be to authorize me to vote or to exercise the college's right to vote during the condominium association meeting instead of the approval for this contract, because the contract will be made with the condominium association and PGA V Architects. So I'm hoping that makes sense to everyone.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again. Because this is what was addressed in the earlier meeting, I won't get into near the details that I got into relative to this request in that meeting, other than to say that the request really is to engage PGA V Architects under the umbrella of as a preferred vendor. This is, this request primarily is being done because they're following standard guidelines as generated in manuals that are endorsed by the state. They've had a longstanding relationship with the college relative to this project, and we don't want to lose that history. We believe that the value is sufficient there to, to warrant their engagement so that we don't have to pay redundant fees for the repeat of any of those values. We also believe that, given the context of their fee and the additional services that they're willing to provide within the, within the parameters of that fee as quoted, and that that fee is at the bottom range of the guidance that they operate from, that, that going out for full RFP wouldn't really warrant a different decision, perhaps a different outcome other than this. So I'll entertain any questions that the board may have before moving forward on this.
Any questions? Okay, all right. May I have a motion, please?
I move to grant Dr. Moser authority to vote in favor of the PGA V contract at the association meeting.
In favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Moser.
Thank you.
All righty, next, the next in the lineup is the approval of the exterior sculptures presented by Dr. Mosier.
Thank you. I will share my screen again, Randy. So this is, we have two sculpture pieces to look at. This is one that is somewhat been already approved prior to the creation of this, or we would not have moved forward. This is the sculpture that we've been working with the artist Rita Blitt. She's the one who has provided a lot of the paintings around campus. This sculpture is called Destiny. You can see the little wooden sculpture in the bottom, which was created in nineteen ninety-seven or seventy-seven, nineteen seventy-seven. And we believe this sculpture is just perfect for the downtown location as really that new facility, the repurposing of the church really is symbolic of the destiny for the future of downtown Kansas City, Kansas. This falls within the price range that we previously discussed as it had been put in the works a while back. So total with shipping and crating is twenty-two thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. And we will store it here. Mr. Beach has identified a location where it will be delivered and sit safely until the time it is installed at the downtown location. The second one is a piece that has not yet been created, but it's been purposefully designed for student housing. Trying to show you the full piece if possible. This piece is called Ascension, as we believe our students will come and they will ascend to new heights as they are staying in student housing and pursuing their education at KC KCC. It's sixteen feet tall, about eight feet wide, and the ribbons are fourteen inches deep. So it's shiny stainless steel, polished stainless stainless steel on the outside and a black toned aluminum in the middle to create that contrast. I provided the prices on the side because of supply chain and the demand, increased commodity prices. We, when we talked about adding sculptures across campus, and there will be more to come, we've talked about them being in the forty to fifty thousand dollar price range, depending on their size and the, the design of the piece. This one has a lot of metal with the interior pieces. It started at fifty-seven thousand dollars, and we've been able to value engineer it. So we actually get the exact same look at forty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars as we would with a look at the fifty-seven thousand dollar price range. So this one, we are asking for approval to move forward with. And it can be built and delivered, and we would, the company would deliver it, and we would work with the equipment here to install it on a pad that will be custom-created for this piece. I think it's gonna add a really beautiful piece of art. This would sit on the outside grassy area in front of the primary entrance to the student housing facility.
And Dr. Moser, is the, the cost of the pad on which it sits, is that included in the forty-nine, five, twenty-seven, or is that something?
It is not.
Is not?
No, so the, the pad would be separate. We're also installing lights. We would install lights around that grassy area anyway for safety purposes. But we'll have some light, a light design that will be purposefully fit to light this piece.
Okay, and the light, but the light is installation as well as the pad creation. Is that going to be, is that work going to be performed by KC KCC employees or outside?
You may need to connect with Mr. Beach. It'd either be KC KCC or Conco.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, that is on. Right now, the plan is to have Conco run all the electrical conduits and wiring to the, to the selected site, construct the custom-made base for the, for the monument. The cost, the costs of those are not currently included in the scope of the housing project. We, we don't know for sure what they will be in total because they're still designing the base and getting material quotes and contract quotes. So we'll, we'll let you know what that cost is, but the work is intended to be done by Conco Construction as the building is, is finished and landscaping goes in, so that we don't have to dig up any ground and repeat things.
Thank you. And if I add one more item, this is the fabrication cost of these pieces of art. The value of the pieces of art will range between three and four times the fabrication cost because we are not paying any artist's fees or any art gallery commissions, et cetera. So this piece would range between a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and two hundred thousand dollars in value if we were to buy it in a normal mechanism. But the artist is donating her art and her labor to transition the pieces from a two-D pen and pencil drawing into a three-dimensional sculpture.
Dr. Moser, would this piece be ready in time for the ribbon cutting in June?
If we take action on it tonight, yes, it would.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Moser on either of the sculptures? Beautiful, by the way. Now, I was going to say, for the first one, you'd mentioned that it'll be in safe storage until the, you know, the downtown campus is ready. But if you need some storage, I can probably move some things around in my garage. Absolutely beautiful. That is, that is just, it's outstanding, so.
If you want to see the original piece, it is in my office. Rita wanted to make sure that the original stayed with the now full-size sculpture.
Right.
Belongs to the college.
Right, okay, well done.
Hold on to it as long as I can.
Rita will be knocking outside your door, Dr. Moser. Yeah, all right. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. So at this time, if there are no more questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the exterior sculptures, sculptures, excuse me.
I move.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Sculptures are approved. All righty, let's see. The next is the approval to pursue land donation, and this is to be presented by Dr. Moser, please.
I think I'll just continue down the Word document I've created here. We have been very graciously offered the donation of land for possible billboard use for the college. There are two pieces. This is the first one, and the address on it is, sorry, let me come back to the top. Fifty-seven Caugh Drive, so it is about one mile east of our main exit to the college and near where the exit to the tech center is. It's a little over one acre, and we talked about this in the finance committee. It would be gifted to the college, and Mike Beach and Dr. Bartunek are working on zoning and cost estimation for that. We were on a call with the Unified Government, Ms. Cheryl Harrison Lee and Catherine Carter, and they're checking on city zoning that needs to be required and learned that since it is adjacent to a highway, we will also need to get approval from the state or a illuminated billboard there. So the thought is that if the cost and everything is something that is amenable and makes sense to the college, that we would do an electronic billboard that would rotate probably, you know, up to ten different ads as the college, as the owner. Let's say, for example, we would have three ads on rotation. We would sell the other seven ads, and we would just, we need to do some more research on the cost of those ads, but it could be, you know, easily two thousand dollars a month or so, I would think. So that's fourteen thousand dollars a month in revenue that would be generated. We would put that towards paying off the expense of the sign. And then my thought is, for college purposes, the rev, the net revenue that is generated from these signs and locations could be put into a permanent student scholarship. So using the, the numbers that I just described, if we have three ads running and we sell seven, that's fourteen thousand dollars a month. That could be a, up to fourteen thousand dollars a month or so, would have to do the numbers. That would go to a continuous donation for student scholarships. So it'd be pretty lucrative for our foundation and our scholarships to have a reoccurring revenue stream. So this is one location, and that's, like I said, that's on Highway seventy. This is on Shawnee Drive, so it is just north of the Johnson County, County Line off of six thirty-five. So I think that's a, an Arby's, or it's a, it's a fast food restaurant of some sort.
KFC Taco Bell.
KFC Taco Bell, thank you. And then this was just unused land that the developer did not use. And again, graciously volunteering the donation of that land to the college if we can, again, get the zoning and the, the cost to be effective for the college. And again, that, that proceeds could go to long-term scholarships for our students for generate revenue for, for years to come. So we have more research to do on that. The red line is Johnson County. So we are just as you enter or exit, and if possible, we would look at a two-sided face sign.
Right.
So what we're asking permission tonight is that we be able to, if we're requesting permission to continue to pursue information down this route to see if it makes sense for the college, and we can get the appropriate zoning to do electronic billboards.
Wanting clarification? This one would be electronic as well?
Yes, but right now, the thought is that they would both be electronic so that we could sell ads and, and create scholarship revenue in the long run.
Going back to the first one?
Mm-hmm.
It's a, looks like a fairly good-sized piece of property. Any thoughts about the potential of how that, rest of that land might be used?
Not at this point. It's one point three acres, one point three acres, yeah.
It's from the north, so really you're looking west, but from the highest point of his blue line there, that, that's the most highest elevation on that. It slopes off down toward I seventy, and it slopes way off down toward K thirty-two. I don't know, Ray, that.
Wouldn't be feasible.
Uh, yeah, I don't believe it would, or anything else.
It's a pretty steep incline, which makes it. It's a pretty steep incline, which makes it perfect for a very visible billboard because of the, on the height of the slope.
Right, yeah.
Um, but I have not looked down here, we, we're um, they're looking at how far off is electricity to some of these areas as well, by the restaurants, uh, of course, it's going to be close. Here, we would have to look where there's uh junction box tie-offs, et cetera.
Would that sign be uh good for both um seventy and, oh, you know, thirty-two right down through there? Could they say for both?
Um, probably to get the greatest visibility off of seventy, which has the highest traffic.
Yeah.
It would be skewed to be pointed towards seventy slightly. So they would be seen, um, but really the, there's so much traffic on I seventy. I think this piece of land is a gold mine, honestly.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I just
Is this, is this, oh, excuse me, go on, excuse me, Doc, Dr. Daniel, I'm sorry, go on.
Oh, I'm, no, I'm done.
Well, is this, I'm trying to visualize, is this seventy, going seventy east or seventy west?
West.
Um, seventy west?
Westbound right now.
Westbound, and so
Here's, here's the college.
Is that, is that like around the fifty-seventh street exit?
That, that's it.
It is right here.
Okay, so, so it wa- it would sit, I guess you say, to the south?
Correct.
And then that's the river, it's over there like not that far from the river?
Correct.
Is that, okay.
For here.
Yeah.
But it's just ideal, I mean, I think this is the turnoff to get on the fifty-set, uh
Right.
Five-seven, fifty, fifty-seven, and this goes to tech.
Yes.
So it's right there, it's perfect for tech, it's
Not directly, no.
Well, but it goes up to state and then
To state, yes.
We go to
Yeah, they, and then you make a, a left to go to western state, yeah.
Right.
It would be the exit, I'm sorry, I should say, to tech.
Yep.
But that's, and, and there's, here's the col- here's main campus here.
I move, we uh approve the uh, go ahead and pursuing it, at least looking into it.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you so much. Right, next is the approval of owner representative firm with conditions, uh presented by Dr. Moser.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so this is a follow-up conversation to the one that we had in executive session. Again, the terminology uh would be changed, uh requesting approval to authorize myself to exercise the college's right to vote in favor of the owner representative firm with the um, the, the downtown condominium association.
Does, does anyone have any questions? Any further comment?
What are the conditions?
Because we're, we've changed it slightly, um, it would be, those conditions are not necessarily there, but I'm trying to, making sure I choose my words correctly here. Um, but any substantial changes to what was discussed in executive session would be brought back to the board.
Yeah, okay.
Just Would you read the motion again, Dr. Moser?
Yes, uh, so the motion is to approve the authorization of Dr. Moser to exercise the college's right to vote on the selection of the owner representative firm with the uh downtown condominium association.
I make that motion.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you, Dr. Moser.
And I'll add one, just uh because we do want to be transparent, when the decision is made, that decision with the name of the company, with the details of the contract will be brought back and disclosed in a public forum.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you so much. Right, excuse me, moving on to item twenty, the informational section of the agenda. Uh, first is the capital campaign fundraising report presented by Dr. Moser.
Randy, we'll go back to the share. Um, so we've had a lot of movement in um with the capital campaign. Um, some things for the positive and some things we're a little bit behind on. So I want to give a, a, a full report on where we are to date. Uh, the top box is the anticipated fundraising sources. Uh, so as you can see, the college has uh allocated the ten million dollars to start. We're looking at twenty-eight million dollars, twenty-eight-five-hundred from philanthropic donors and partners. Uh, about twenty-five million dollars from the state, and I'll break that down later. Um, three million dollars in federal funding, that was the EDA. Uh, we would, we will be doing new market tax credits towards the end of the project. And that would range from a fifteen-million-dollar project to a twenty-million-dollar project, netting three and a half to four million dollars. Um, thus achieving the seventy-million-dollar goal. So I've provided the sources of funding down below. I have uh deleted names where I felt it necessary, as the individuals may not want their names presented at this time. Uh, but we do have Casey KCC and the Sunderland Foundation as a, as key uh funds going into the project. Community America Credit Union is paying their own way. Um, we've talked for quite a while about the EDA grant. Um, that has been, we anticipated that we would have this by the December thirty-first deadline. Uh, where we wanted to reach fifty percent fundraising uh of the total goal, which is thirty-five million dollars. That will come into play later. Um, because of the complexity of the EDA grant, and we're only asking them to do brick and mortar within the confines of a specific space of an overall seventy-million-dollar project. It's, there's extra due diligence that we're doing now, and we're about ready to present that to the EDA. They've been very gracious on having conversations with us on the best way to present this request to them to increase the odds for funding, so it expresses their desire to see this funded. Your federal discretionary funds by Representative Davids for FY twenty-twenty-two. Um, I'm not sure if you've been on the news or not today, but a couple hours ago, President Biden signed the uh um, the, the omnibus budget amount, I have it here later. Um, and our almost two million dollars for equipment for automation engineering is in that. So we can move it from where it was requested into received now. So we can add two million dollars to these numbers when we get down to the bottom.
Very
Dr. Bartunick is working on the three-million-dollar discretionary request for Senator Moran to sponsor for the Health and Wellness Stack. It's a million dollars a floor per partner. And also, it's uh about two-point-one-five million dollars as the second discretionary ask. And we'll ask either Senator Moran or Representative Davids to sponsor that, that's for twenty-twenty-three. Um, Unified Government has uh stated that they will be doing roadwork on Sixth Street and State Avenue. Um, and then we have some adjustment on our request. Um, we've had very good conversations with Mayor Garner, the city administrator um and other representatives of the new administration, and I believe they will be very favorable in helping us move this project forward. ARPA Unified Government, we have requested six million. Um, and we don't know, that process has not been defined yet on how it will be moved forward. We do have a thirty-million-dollar request into the state ARPA um fund. Uh, I have a phone call message in for uh Lieutenant Governor Tolan to do a kind of a quick catch-up on timing around that project. Um, as a secondary, uh, I have als- I also have a eighteen-million-dollar request which represents the sixty percent of the thirty million dollars of the college's portion of the downtown project that is part of the hundred-and-ninety-five-million-dollar K-bore funding. Um, so that is a, is a backup, and I just would rather double my odds on receiving that significant uh amount of funding. This funding line is going to be very key in order for us to stay on time and on target for a fall twenty-twenty-four grand opening. And then you'll see here, we have received pledges again in the second column, requests in the third column. Um, and here I have blinded the information, but you can see where we've received money from different funders, donors. And then the others are called perspectives, or prospects. Um, this prospect, I believe we will have an answer in the very near future. Um, and I think it will be positive, up to a million dollars. Uh, inner gifts from the um Casey KCC employees of, of twenty thousand, which is great to see.
Yeah, great.
Um, these are requests that will be made in the next few months. So I'm going to kind of scroll to the bottom so we can get to the total picture. So right now uh, let me get my mouse to work here. Right now, we are at approximately twenty-five-point-five million dollars. Um, that's thirty-six percent of our seventy-million-dollar goal. Again, if um s- some of those items would have hit at the end of last year, we would have been closer to our fifty percent goal. So if we add the two million dollars, which I, we can now add from the earmark, that's thirty-nine percent. Uh, if we add the other million dollars that's anticipated in the near future, that puts us at forty percent. Um, but we do have some room to go, so that's why it is, it is very key. Um, and I'm expressing that to all partners, that we continue to professionally and respectfully request that thirty million dollars from state ARPA. Uh, when we do that, that would take us to seventy million dollars, almost, uh, let me see, no. So column, this column is twenty-five million, this, the third column, my mouse is locking up. The third column is forty-four million, so when we add those two columns together, that's seventy million. We have another twenty-one million dollars um in the pipeline in the next thirty to sixty days to be requested. That puts us at ninety-two million, and I would say we have about another thirty million dollars in other uh prospects that are not on this list that will be added yet. So I believe we will get there. Um, it, it's key, again, Sparks or the eighteen-million K-bore is key in order for us to be able to open uh for fall twenty-twenty-four. Uh, if for some reason we do not receive that funding, or there's a significant delay, we would need to adjust our timeline to a January twenty-twenty-five start would be the earliest. So I know that's a, a lot of information, and I would take any questions.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Moser?
Thank you for the report.
Yes, thank you, excellent information.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We have a lot of people working very hard on that, I have to say.
Yeah. It shows.
Yeah, oh, this is the timing, and I mentioned, you know, some of the delays already, and what
Okay.
The last information I have is just an update on the downtown incident that uh, the, the board, I'm sure, is aware of, others may not. Um, the red boundary line defines the perimeter of the new downtown facility. The ri- the yellow circle identifies the computer store uh which the college purchased last year. Um, over, I think it was Friday night or Saturday night, we had um a, a large vehicle start the demo of the project for us. Uh, but really, we did not have that planned. So this is the back of the computer store, i- it's an add-on. Yeah, right, the um
Number one, didn't it?
Yes, this is an east wall, and this is a north wall, both of those walls are weight-bearing. Um, so this roof is just barely sitting up there, it is a hazard at this point. Um, and I'll show you pictures on how it's connected to this portion of the building. We did have a structural engineer come in and study this on Friday, and there are some additional pictures. But also, you'll note that this red brick um column, which supports this additional kind of scabbed-on add-on um is not straight.
Yeah, it, it looks like it's on its last leg.
Yeah, we'll move to the next picture. This just shows that area a little bit, and you can just see how dilapidated it is. And some wood has been brought in at some point in time to re-support the concrete, which is somewhat backwards. But uh, the, the study by the engineer with the request was did the vehicle hitting the other portion of the building cause further damage to these areas structurally? Um, the report is that no, there is no additional damage that is for the scene caused by that incident. However, these are not stable buildings. So the roof needs to be brought down on the, the area that was damaged. So this is where that roof connects to the su- the northern wall of the building to the south. So you can see it's sitting on this little bitty lip right here. So no one wants to go under that roof to go check it out any further, to check to see how safe it is. Which I commend them for that intelligence. Um, but the report is that uh, it needs to be brought down, and whoever brings it down um needs to make sure that no more damage is done, you know, to this structure, which is to the south, it's hard to tell in this image. Um, or, or the uh, yeah, the structure to the west. Um, so I will share that report, uh, the new county administrator, uh, Ms. Cheryl uh Harrison Lee and Catherine Carter have seen these images, except for the ones that have red line on it. I'll share the art, the um structural engineering report with them. Um, they were very gracious, and their first thought process was, so you need help bringing these buildings down? And our answer was absolutely yes.
Resounding yes.
Yeah, so more to come, uh, but that's where we are on it. Uh, we do need to work to get this roof brought down. Um, a- and just make sure that we're not damaging anything further.
Secure the area now, so people can't get in it?
Yeah, thank you. So there is, uh, we hired a, a company to come in on a Saturday or Sunday. There is a six-foot-tall chain-link fence across here, so no one can come down that aisle.
Oh, yeah.
Um, alley, I'm sorry. And there is a fence from the corner of the Firestone Building, which is on the bottom left of this image all the way over to the church, which would be on the far right-hand. It's completely fenced off, and it has, instead of a post in the ground, it has supporting dog legs on the fence to provide support. So it's temporary, uh, but someone would purposely have to take it down, move around it, climb over it, do something. They can't just accidentally come into uh contact with this building. But we do need to look at having it brought down. Um, our cost, I asked PD and facilities to put together cost on what i- it has cost the college to secure, re-secure, re-secure this building and, and the others. You can see the plywood being brought up here. We secure it, and we plywood the whole face up, and someone breaks into it, and we go down and we secure it again. The cost to date is about sixty thousand dollars. Um, the fence was seventy-five-hundred dollars, so with sixty thousand dollars, we could have almost brought down that building. So we're expressing that cost, that the, the restrictions that the UG has placed on us in order to not bring this down, for what we believe is not a reasonable expectation, has cost us $60,000. So again, it's a new
Who's doing the investigation on the incident?
This inspection was done
No, on, on the, on identifying the truck that
Our college police were there, the city police were there, about 20 firefighters.
Have they made any, any progress on any area of video?
The video, there's not a direct video that shows the corner of this building. There is a video on the southeast corner of the Willigill that shows the aisle, the alley. But, I'm sorry, but if, we believe that the bil- the vehicle, and you can see the mud flap there, was backing down the alley and ran into the building and somehow became attached to the building and spun out to go back up. And when it did so, it, you know, I think it knocked it down coming backwards, and then it ripped it out going forward. So, so far, no additional outcome to the investigation of trying to find the vehicle that pulled out. It, it occurred between 6:00 PM in the evening and 1:30 AM that night. So because we patrol these buildings, especially as we own them now, I, I think minimum of four times a day.
Greg, what's the timeline of being able to tear this down? Where are we on UG with getting
Waiting on UG.
We have just started the conversation with the new administration, so I, I feel there's more positive support, but I don't have a timeline yet.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Yeah. I, I believe we can, the, the, I believe that the county commissioners can override the decision made by the Landmark Commission. They don't necessarily want to do that, but given the circumstances, then they may do that.
Has the Landmark Commission been down to take a look at this?
No.
Probably not.
No, not that I'm aware of, the fires
Put that back up?
There has been some research done by the UG on the Firestone Building. And one of the findings, you know, it is a, a brownfield area. But it cannot be inspected because the roof of the Firestone Building is not secure enough for anyone to go underneath it to inspect it. So there's much more of a
Oh, yeah, if you go back to that aerial
Yeah, it's
Although you, you can clearly see it.
That's the
Look at that, look at that.
Firestone Building.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's got some issues, so
Got to be compromised inside there too.
Yeah.
Safe to go in here to inspect it, and like, to inspect it for asbestos or anything like that. So there, there's some different costs and such that we're looking at. But I believe the UG is, is, is taking a very serious look at this now. And we're, we're trying to bring up the entire downtown community. And I think they understand and, and what we're trying to do and the economic value to the downtown area, the UG, and additional taxpayers from our graduates, and the social good that it brings to northeast Kansas City, Kansas, so
It's a major entryway into our city.
Right, absolutely.
People drive by there and see that as part of Kansas City, Kansas.
Yeah. So I, I, I think we will have good support. I want to give the, the new administration an opportunity to take a look at this. It will take some time for them to do so and, and see how we move forward.
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Mosier. Any, any questions for Dr. Mosier? Okay, and that case, it looks like we have come almost sneeze, excuse me. I know, bless me in advance, thank you so much. Looks like we've come to the end of our time together, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Why are we delayed?
All right, so, all right, on favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you again, everyone, for all of your time and your inputs. We, we certainly appreciate everybody.
Have a good, have a good evening.
Great meeting.
You, everyone.
Enjoy your day. Thanks for us love.